Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Dawson County Sheriff's Commissioner's Work Session. Today is December 19th, 2019. We do appreciate your attendance. We'll get right into the new business. First up, we have a presentation of our RFP 360-19, Legal Services for Dawson County, Constitutional Officers and Elected Officials, County Employees. Recommendation, Personnel Manager Melissa Hawke. Melissa?
Captain, Chairman, and Board, I just want to come to you and let you know where we are with the evaluation of the RFP that you mentioned. Technical has been done. Had to get clarification on some of the pricing that I believe is going to be done this afternoon. And then I'll be able to put everything together, get back with the evaluation team and see what our recommendation will be to you guys on January 6th. So with that being said, the recommendation for your legal services is to extend your current interim county attorney agreement with your Davis through January 31st to ensure you have counsel until we get a contract.
Questions for Melissa?
Do we have to put that on the nots at the end of the meeting?
We could.
I think you have to in order to...
Keep it in the next year.
In the end, it's taken first.
Since our next meeting is...
Six o'clock.
Yeah.
Other questions for Melissa?
Who did the clarification of the prices?
It would be all three of them. Our three people that were companies that we had received bids for is Hossley, Oliver Mahar, LLP in Gainesville, Fox Chandler-Hummens, Hicks, and McKinnon of Dawsonville, and then Gerardine Davis of Coman. And we had clarification from all three of them, which is very common in any type of proposal. You know, we have clarification even in a regular construction bid unless it's just a lump sum, you normally have some type of clarification.
Other questions? Thank you, ma'am. Next up, we have a presentation of 2020 election qualifying fees for local offices. Chief Financial Officer Vicki Knapp.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Coming before you today to request that you consider the qualifying fees for the 2020 election. The county governing authorities require to set and publish the qualifying fees for elected county offices. Those county offices are commissioners, sheriff, tax commissioner, deputy court clerk, magistrate judges, probate judge, coroner, and county school board members and surveyors. And these fees have to be adopted and published prior to February 1st. And in 2020, there will be 13 local offices voted on in 2020. That's the county commissioner, District 2 and 4, Board of Education, Districts 1, 2, and 4, sheriff, purpose to your court, judge of probate court, chief magistrate judge, surveyor, coroner, tax commissioner, and county commission chairperson. So the fees are based on the minimum salary for these offices, and it's a percentage of that minimum salary. And so the fees are really the same that they've been for a long time. And anyway, there's 13 offices, and so I just need for you to approve those so we can get them advertised and taken care of. But they're the same that they were like two years ago when we had the last election.
Questions for Vicki?
The only thing that's different is it's a little bit less for the Board of Education. Not sure why they were where they were, it's like a hundred dollars or something last time. But when I spoke with the Board of Education to get the minimum salary, she said, "I don't know why there was a difference before," but it's ninety-nine dollars for each of the Board of Ed's office. And we have to set the for the Board of Education? Set what, Tim?
Since we handle the election, is that what it is?
Okay.
Other questions for Vicki?
Do we need to go down this tonight?
She's got to have that by February 1st.
I agree with her.
Other question? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next up, we have discussion of defined benefit and defined contribution, retirement benefit upgrade. I'm going to start this out, and then I had asked Ms. Davis in reference to some legal questions associated with this, so I'll let her respond to that. And I'd also asked Ryan Reynolds to come, but I don't see him currently, and he'd say he's going to try to make it. And also, I'm going to let you hear from Johnny Coltsclaw, because if you remember, the last time we talked about this, I talked about some input coming from our staff as part of the percentage. He's going to speak to that on their behalf as well. I want to start out by saying that when the Board takes us up for a vote, I will not be voting. Because being a long-term, 37-year employee of the county, at some point in time, I will be eligible for some kind of a benefit. So I will not be voting on that so that there is no inclination of any of the pride.
About Tim?
Tim's already drawing, so he's good.
He can vote?
Yes. He's already getting his benefits, so nothing he does changes his, to my knowledge. Is that correct?
But isn't there one part in there that he, there's one option?
Well, it would depend on age.
Right. And I think that decision, it depends on the proposal to Commissioner Nix's point. I think there's one proposal that would increase benefits for those currently drawing, and if that's the case, it could impact...
At certain times, yeah. Okay. But that would have to be included in, it would be included as part of the age plus service to meet that criteria.
I think that's correct.
That's true. And he would be well found on that. So we'll see that as we go through. But anyway, I wanted to start out talking about the history so that everybody be on the same page, have an understanding of where we are. As you're aware, we have two different retirement benefits. We have a defined benefit plan and a defined contribution plan. The defined benefit plan was frozen back in 2007. No new people have been added to that plan since 2007. Since then, everybody who has taken the benefit is part of the defined contribution. Currently, in the defined benefit plan, and I'll go with that one first, there's 230 participants. Now, of those 230 participates, 48 of those have retired sometime back, and they're receiving the benefit. There is 126 people who have yet to receive a benefit. They are in what's called a vested group. They have the ability to save a benefit at some point in time. And then there are approximately 50 current employees, somewhere in that neighborhood, 45 to 50 current employees. Currently, the county contributes 4.3% to the defined benefit plan based on the salary of remaining people that are still working. That salary number is about $2,909,37. And you multiply that times 4.3%. Currently, they're contributing, we're contributing about $125,000. You should have that documentation that was sent to you in reference to that. All right. In that 230, this past year, it was, came to our attention that about 70 of those employees that were in that 230 fell into a stipulation where they could be bought out of that program. In other words, they basically had not generated $10,000 worth of revenue in the program. So they could be bought out, and that was unbeknownst to all 70 of those people. They did not know that. So we sent them, or the company did, Gevcor, which is now ACCG, in conjunction with our HR department, sent those people a letter. Now, a great many of those did take that buy-in. Brad, you may have that number. I don't know exactly what that number was, but I know there were a few of those people we didn't find, 10 or 12 or so, that we still haven't been able to get an address for. And so they're, so significantly, the 230 number is now down because those people got bought out. And there were a lot of people who were extremely happy to find out that they were eligible for a little bit of money. And matter of fact, unfortunately, some of those people didn't even know they had a benefit.
That money was already sitting in the plan.
That money was already there. We didn't pay for them. That money was already there. Matter of fact, the only people you pay on now are the people still working. All the other people's money is already pretty much in the plan. And it's designed that way. Now, obviously, you're going to see some fluctuation from time to time because it's designed to where when Chris continues his, discontinues his work here, that there's enough money already in the plan to cover them. That's the way it was designed. Now, I was hopeful Ryan would be here so he could better explain that particular piece. That current plan is, has what is called a 1% multiplier. So if you worked 30 years in Dawson County, you're going to get 530% of your highest five years averaged. So in other words, if you make $50,000 in five highest years, then multiply that by 30%, that's what you're going to get for your retirement, which would be $15,000 a year divided by 12, minus taxes. So you wouldn't get a whole lot. But that's where we're at today. What I'm proposing to you, and what is some of the employees have talked to me about over the last couple of years to try to enhance this, in the defined benefit, I'm proposing a change to what's called the rule of age with a minimum age of 55. So in other words, if you are 55 years old and you've worked 25 years, you could draw your full retirement. Currently, today, you have to be 65 years old to draw your full retirement, and then you can do a reduced benefit at age 60. There is no age rule other than those rules that are associated with what we have today. Like I said, I told the staff at the very beginning of this, as we started to talk about this, that they would have to be some buy-in, that currently the county is putting in 4%. If you put in 4% in reference to the defined contribution, and they're putting in 4.31, 4.3% in the defined benefit. So I had Ryan run some numbers. When you have that copy there, the amount that would go to the recommended employer contribution after the plan change would be 225,600, which is about a $100,000 difference. So talking to the staff, I told them, I said, "No, we need about a 3% buy-in, which would keep it at 4.8," the county's portion. At 3%, multiplying that times the 2.9 million means that the employee would contribute 87,000 of that $100,000 increase, which means the county would pick up 13,000 of that approximately.
That contribution is from the 50 current employees?
Yes. So, yeah. That's the only people you could get it from, because that's the only ones here.
Right.
Right. And so Johnny will speak to that a little bit more in a few minutes, because I did ask him to check with everybody, because what I wanted to do is make sure if we were going to make some increases, that it would be fair across the board for all the staff. And so that's when we'll get to defined contribution here in just a minute. So that would change the county's portion to 4.8%, 3% from the employee. Now, going over to the defined contribution, we currently have 112 people in the defined contribution plan that are currently working. As you well know, that's 4% if you put in 4%. I'm proposing you change that to 5% if they put in 5%. Because Vicki's calculated the cost of that at $56,364. She sent that out, too. So combined, if the Board so chose to do both of these, it would be a cost of around $70,000 to the county on an annual basis to improve both of these plans. Now, looking at these, one of the main reasons I wanted to look at it, obviously, was I love longevity. I like to have our employees here long-term. I think that we save money when we have long-term employees versus constant turnover, and we dealt with that a whole lot. But there was some legal things that I wanted Ms. Davis to check out. She sent y'all an email, and I'll let her elaborate on the legality.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, the email that I sent out to you, I would actually commend you to read that and ask me any questions that you have. I think it may be better suited for attorney-client privileged conversation, to be honest with respect to some of those legal issues, but let me just give you an overview of those issues. Based upon the proposal that's made, there's really three classes of employees, and each are not employees, three classes of people who could benefit from this, and I think it's important to realize that. So there's a group of current employees, which has been identified. There's a group of former employees who are vested but not currently drawing. And then there's current retirees who are former employees who are already receiving a reduced benefit that could potentially get an increased benefit. So three different classes. And so as we go through this process and learn more about it, and frankly, I went first at all, like the chairman is, or like Ryan, if he is able to come and speak at Gevcor, about the financial components or the operational components of these plans. That's something I have not been asked to get into and I'm not terribly familiar with. But just from the legal perspective, I was asked to look at these three classes of employees and to determine whether there were any legal issues that would preclude us from doing it. And with each class, there's different issues presented. You know, a couple of issues that we're wanting to grapple with is making sure that we're not giving a benefit that would be deemed a gratuity, and also not giving a benefit in a way that would discriminate against one class of employees versus the other class of employees. And obviously, intending to, we don't want to set out intending to help the employees and then somehow be a disadvantage to another group and be perceived as being inequitable or be an equal protection type issue. So those are the issues that I've analyzed for you among each of those classes. And again, I think it would be best if you read that and digest it, and then let's speak about it in a privileged setting.
Okay. Everybody good with that? All right, now, Johnny, if you will, come on up, speaking on behalf of the employees in the defined benefit class, because you have made conversation with those, and we've had conversation.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to create an opportunity...
Wait a minute. Now, in this plan, has the county made all the contributions to their retirement?
They have.
So they don't have any skin in that game?
Not yet.
Okay.
But they would if it was changed.
Okay. And you said there's about how many, 45 to 50?
45 to 50 current.
Well, and that's what I want to speak to, Ms. Fossett. I actually spoke to 34 employees, and those are the employees that are currently working. That's my understanding.
I think there's a few more, but...
Well, some of those froze that. There were 46 employees on my list.
Okay.
34 of those are still working for the county at this time, still participating actively in this benefit. And those would be the ones that would be subject to any increase or any buy-in or skin, if you will, into this. So those other 12 or so employees, I did not speak with because they are still employees, but they froze that back in 2007. And that's something that you guys will look at and evaluate and recommend. So out of those 34 employees, the one thing that I said to them was, like you just said, Ms. Fossett, is that so far, we've not been paid anything, but we're coming to you in agreement with the chairman and saying, "Hey, we want to be able to buy in and have a contribution made before we can get our benefit and not be penalized." And that's the key for us. Most folks didn't even realize if they retired at the age of 60, they would receive approximately a 40% penalty on what their benefit is. And I'll, actually, here in a few minutes, I'll tell you exactly what that means in numbers to me. I've been here 26 years. Got a long way to go. But back to all the other employees, for the most part, I guess, speaking for some of those that are in attendance here, we understand that we've got to do a buy-in, and we also understand that we're going to get penalized, and we know that right now. And that's the key, that once now everybody realizes that, we want to try to prevent that.
Now, Paul, you've been penalized.
Because at the age of 60, something happens if we retire at the age of 60, for whatever reason. And most of us have really no intention of doing that, but I'll just go ahead and speak to the public safety standpoint of that. We may have to retire at the age of 60, or 61, or 62, without choice. It may be a physical thing that occurs, or quite frankly, and if I'm being honest with you, it could be a mental thing because we just had too much, you know, of what we see. And I'll call that our last call. And most of the employees of those 34, I think it's about half and half, one or two on the other side, 15 of those, or 17 of those, will call it our public safety, law enforcement, and fire. And I would also throw in there that the judicial employees who are in the clerk's office or the superior court office, they see the same thing we see, just in a different sense. So we never really know when we're going to go home at 5:00 or 6:00 or 7:00 in the afternoon and say, "You know what? That's my last call. I can't do it anymore." And at 60 years old, I will have 41 years of service to the community and to this county. I really don't plan on retiring until 60. But if something happens, I'm going to lose in dollars today, $700 a month is what I'm going to be penalized. And I say penalty because that's what it is. And again, I may not want to retire at the age of 60, but I may not have any choice.
Because how old would you have to be to get full pension?
Right now, you've got to be 65.
Go to 65.
Yes, as the chairman stated. So at 60, if for whatever reason, I was not able to continue working for the county, I would have to wait to 65 to draw my full pension, or I would lose $700 a month, based on the model if you go to the ACCG website and input that information. At 62, when I could get social security, it's still $500 a month. So, you know, that's a pretty good chunk of change for us that have been here and served for 30, 40 years or longer, and then before staff, not by you guys or by our employer, but basically because medical reasons. And I think when the county attorney mentioned, and I won't really get into this, but, you know, I don't understand the whole 452 plan, but what I do understand is that 59, 59 and a half, and I have heard of 55, those employees could, if they got forced to retire for whatever, would not see a reduced or penalty in their benefit. What they've earned is what they've got. So again, if you look at my model on the computer, and I'd be glad to go in and show either one of you that, it says you've earned X amount of dollars, but we're going to penalize you, and you're only going to get this. And like I said, that's $700 and $500 respectively, just for those two years.
And you're saying penalized because of the age?
Because of the age, because you're taking the reduced. You can say penalized, reduced, but you're getting a reduction even though you've earned. It'll show you later. You've earned this much money, but because you're not 65 and you want to go ahead and start drawing, you're going to lose. And that's just simply the only way to put it. You're going to lose that. You're not getting that money back, but we're losing. So, and we're not trying to understand the whole, you know, making sure fair to everybody. And I think this does that because it brings us, with respect to that, we're penalized until 65, and I don't want to compare apples to oranges, but nobody else sits. But we did choose in 2007 to stay in this program. And we could stay with what you have now and not pay one red cent for our retirement pension. But, you know, I think for most of us, we're saying, "Hey, we're coming to you." And most of the time, you guys see people come up here and say, "Give me, give me, give me, and I'm not going to get back to you." But we're coming and saying, "Hey, we know we're going to have to pay a little bit, but we're willing to pay that to not get penalized." And some of these employees may be 60 years old, so in five years, they will be eligible for their full pension. And they plan on hopefully to still work. And quite frankly, they may be here at 65 still working. But I kind of told them like this, it's kind of like paying car insurance. You may pay it for three, four, or five years, and it not benefit that employee at all because they may not exactly meet the rule of 80, or it may not benefit them until like 63 or 64. There's a couple of employees like that. But they're willing to go ahead and take that risk and pay you hopefully the 3% or whatever, even if it doesn't benefit them because it's kind of like paying their car insurance.
So you're buying in to the present program?
Yes, ma'am. And that's what we're asking, that whenever your options are, and when you look at those options, you know, for at least the current employees that are still working, that are still in this program, which is about 34 if I got my numbers correct, we all understand that you could vote for us to pay 3%. And we're looking at that and saying, "Yes, that's what we want to do." And any of the employees that are here that speak against that, that maybe I misunderstood, you know, I would ask them to stand up and say that maybe I misunderstood, because that was something I said at the end of every conversation, basically, that I had, was anything can happen when the five of them vote, or four, either, either how it works out. But we're willing to take that chance, that, you know, we, and a lot of them didn't realize they were going to get that penalty. They had no clue, and I was surprised at that, they had no clue that if they retired in 62, they were going to lose approximately 27% at that time of what's been earned, what's been paid in by the county. It just goes away.
Now, what percent did you recommend to the buy-in?
3.
We're not here at 5%.
5% is what I'm recommending we change the other one to, from 4 to 5.
Okay.
Because basically, what you do is wind up with a match. If we went to the rule of 80 with a minimum age of 55, then the county would be, based on these numbers Ryan sent me, we would be putting in, of the 7.8% that would be needed to get to that dollar amount, the county would be putting in 4.8. The employee would be putting in the other 3.
And I, you know, and I guess in closing for me, I would not be able to walk away without saying this, I recognize, I'm in here just about every third day, and I know what this board has done in 2017 for the employee benefit. I know what you did with the salaries, you know, the numbers that you put in there for that. I see the things you do back and forth, trying to look at employee benefits and so forth, and I do appreciate that. So I don't want you to think that I'm coming in here saying, "Hey, we're getting treated unfairly or whatever," because that's not what I'm saying. We just see an opportunity that for us to buy in and not receive that penalty for what each one of us has, you know, worked hopefully very hard and diligently to earn. And again, like I said, I don't want my last call to go to 80. And, you know, I come to work every day on a personal level, I come to work every day hoping that I don't have to do some of the things that I've had to do the last 26 years. And, you know, the next time I have to do CPR on a coworker that I've known for 25 years in this building, that may very well be my last call. And I will get penalized and lose, if that's at 60, $700 a month, just because I can't take doing CPR on a friend anymore. And with that, I would...
Who's most likely to suffer from stuff like this?
I'm sorry?
Who's most likely? Who's most likely to retire early?
Well, any of us. I think any of us could, you know, be subject to...
Oh, you keep that hand down. Look at your back.
I don't know how early or so tall it would be, but, you know, I think any of us...
But public safety is a good safety.
I'm just thinking, and I don't want to separate the two groups, I think any of us at any time, any of us in this room, have a plan of when we're going to retire. And at any time, that plan could go foul, and we have no control over what's going to happen in our daily life. And any of us could have to retire early. So any of us that do that right now under this current plan will receive that penalty. What I'm just saying is from a public safety standpoint, I don't know how many hose draggers and gun holders out here at 62 and 65 years old that are still able to do what they're doing, even if they want to. At some point, physically and quite frankly mentally, they ran their last call, either by choice or just by circumstance, they ran their last call. And so that's why when it's, you know, 15 and 15, 16 and 16, whatever, employees, that's what I kind of relate that to from my standpoint, because none of us want to quit working. You know, until we, you know, we all have plans, but anything could happen.
Oh, I know, I know.
So...
We're not out of reach from you today.
But if anything happens from us from 60 to 64, we receive that penalty of a benefit that's already been paid for, we just receive a penalty.
Couple of questions.
Go ahead.
What's the impact on long-term liability on our books, and that's a Vicki question, for any of these changes? Is there an impact on our long-term liability for doing an earlier date to allow them to...
As the chairman said, I have not seen all the documents, but the cost would go from 120?
125 to 225. Most of that would be borne by the employee.
So from us...
Currently, it's based on the salary of the employees that are still working, that are in that plan.
That's correct.
$2,909,37, which is the document that you have, that you was given. Currently, the county puts in 4.3%. So if you multiply that times the $2,909,000, it's $125,000, right around there, a few more dollars, but they rounded it off. Go to the 55 with the rule of 80, Ryan is saying the recommended contribution should be 225,600. Ryan is saying the recommended contribution should be twenty, two twenty-five, six hundred, which is seven point eight percent. If you multiply that three percent times the two point nine oh nine million dollars, that comes to approximately eighty-seven thousand dollars, which is what I have told the staff and the members here that they would have to buy into. So basically, the county would be left with four point eight percent of that seven point eight percent, which means that they would see a thirteen thousand dollar increase to what we're paying today.
Thank you.
And. And then if you decided to do the other one to five percent, which I wanted to be even across the board for all of our employees, and change that to five percent, which is basically in line with the four point eight that the county is, would be paying on this one, would be, according to Ms. Vicki, is around fifty-six thousand, two hundred something dollars. So combined, we're looking at around seventy grand.
That number's based on current participation?
Yes.
But where other communities have gotten in trouble with pension plans is they are taking those assets out of those plans and utilizing them everywhere else, and they're not refunding them. Is that?
Ours is not.
We're not doing that.
Where a lot of governments have gotten into trouble is they did not fund according to the recommended amount that we're given every year, that we should, there's, there's a, there's a minimum and a recommended. And a lot of governments have only funded the minimum, and, um, and so they've gotten behind. So they don't have the, the money in the pot, basically, to, to cover those, to cover that, um, recommended amount. So that's, that's where you can get in trouble.
But we're not, and we've been doing it at higher levels.
We do it at the recommended amount.
Okay, second question. The money that an employee contributes to this, is it a, um, the right term, qualified money? Is it pre-tax or post-tax?
I know that the money that we do in the.
401Ks, you have an option of a Roth or a traditional, and there's a variation there, and I don't know if there's a variation on that.
So I'm not sure about the defined benefit. I don't know if both Brad knows.
I don't know.
Should be pre-taxed, most retirees are, I would say.
Well, again, on 401K, you can do a Roth, and there's two different options in a 401K. I just, I was just curious. Uh, which would reduce your Roth?
I know the four fifty-seven that our employees put in now is pre-tax.
That's correct.
I don't know why, but they're putting it in, because it would be.
Because it lessens your tax liability.
Right.
If you contribute to the defined contribution, that money is not, you don't pay taxes on it until you pay your house.
Yeah, right, that's right.
And I think this would be the same, because you're not paying, you, if you draw your defined benefit money once you retire, you pay taxes on that money.
Pay taxes on it, so it's most likely it is the same?
Same, okay. Um, number three, is there increased fee for handling, for changing this, that we have to pay a third party?
No, I wouldn't think so. I mean, most of the, like Ms. Vicki's writing a check, it goes to the defined benefit and the defined contribution.
They send us an invoice once a year. And then we sit down and we allocate that out based on current employees.
That would require some work on Brad's part or somebody's part to put that three percent, taking it out of their own check and sending it along with, I guess, the check that Vicki would send us on the.
Right. It would be kinda the same way we do right now, because every payroll now, we send money to ACCG for the defined contribution plan, so they work the same way.
Okay. Okay. That's, all my questions, I have on the defined benefit, the defined contribution question. Um, I noticed that some of our surrounding counties, it's actually a like one of the five percent to be compared with, um, one of the surrounding counties, however, I noticed a lot of them have a vesting schedule, which is, which is tiered, which I think goes back to your point of longevity. You're here five years, you're a hundred percent vested at year five versus year one, you're at a, a lower scheduled amount. Um, I know we do a hundred percent after our probationary period, I believe, if that's correct.
That's correct, so after your ninety days, you start to invest in that program, you're vested immediately in, in, in corporate as well as government, which the employee puts in, you're vested obviously immediately, that's employees' money. Corporate, um, it's usually vested, as you said, and is looking around the surrounding counties, they have different vesting schedules as well. We're immediate, um, some have that scale twenty percent a year up to five years, to where you're, um, vested after, fully vested after five years. So if you leave after your year, you get your portion, whatever you've invested, and then only twenty percent of whatever the organization has vested. And then as, um, and some of the counties are, are doing, you know, there's just a mix out there. Some are doing, you know, you have to put in at least two percent before they even start putting anything in.
So if one of the goals in, in doing this, and I agree with the overall goal, which you presented, chairman, is longevity of an employee, a vested schedule would, would be, for a new employee that walks in day one, they know, if I'm staying here three years, then I'm more vested than I'm staying here two years. So there could be a longevity component to encourage them to stay longer, which is, is that a fair statement?
I, I think it is, yeah. And when you know, if you look at your, your plan, you know what you're gonna walk away with.
Yep.
But then, you know, you might be looking at that and saying, you know, they've been pretty good to me. Um, every year I get that twenty percent, but if I leave now, um, you know, and it could be the issue where they're a month, in the second year, and they wanna leave a month early, so maybe I'll stick around so I can keep that money.
So in that, in that essentially would be a less burden till they're fully vested on our, on our budget. I mean, because we're, we're accumulating at a lower amount, so is that something that we could look into and get some options to consider on that? With a, with a vesting schedule that might be a, um, you know, let's look at some, maybe a one through five year in, 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 again, I, I, I'm not an expert in the space, obviously, so I lean into you folks that know more about it than I do, but just to be a, uh, competitive in the marketplace, but also know that the goal is for longevity. So it wouldn't affect anybody that's already here, that's already fully vested since day one, but our new employees coming in would follow in with that vested schedule.
The only question, I don't think I'd be able, I can get that information, but, um, that part that's, um, what do we do with that part that, that's vested, and that would be an accounting question, or not vested yet? Because we'd have to have that, I would think, somewhere, or maybe ACCG would have to have that. But we can ask those questions and, and get those back to you.
So that, one more time, what's your?
My, my part's vested, and I'm in month number eleven.
Yeah, yeah.
And I leave what happens to the county's portion. Where was that, is that something reserved?
I mean, I think you have to take a snapshot of the moment that we.
Right.
Initiate it, because you can't retro that, so it would be moving forward, I would assume, that you, without, without a discriminatory process.
Right, well, and, and I'm, I think if I'm understanding your question correctly, I think you stated that you would anticipate if we changed the vesting schedule, it would be for new hires.
That's all I have to do without penalizing your existing people.
Right, right. The only thing that will come into play, and this would be a question for GetCore and the third-party administrator, is they do require discrimination testing across the plans. And so if there's certain participants that have lesser rights, that could be a problem. So I'm not sure if we can have different vesting schedules.
Then how would you ever change it? I mean, once you've implemented it, how would you ever change it if you can't?
Right, well, everybody would change, I think, is the concept, that there's an equality of rights. And that's likely why that two thousand and seven program was frozen, and then you created a new one. I don't, I don't know what the reason was, but that's my guess, is there was some reason to.
It was too expensive.
That was the defined contribution plan, and the reason why that's frozen is a defined benefit. That's a different, okay.
So we would just need, so if you have an interest, that I think your interest would be in maybe considering a vesting schedule that was not an immediate vesting, that some kind of graduated vesting for new hires.
Yep.
So that would be the question, would be new hires versus impacting anyone who's already here?
Yeah, I mean, somebody, I mean, I think it's unfair if somebody, if somebody was hired six months ago on the premise that they're immediately invested.
They have access.
They might have made a job, you know, decision, A or B, and they're vested immediately versus I'm vested five years down the road in Forsyth County, then, then we don't wanna take that away because that decision's already been made, but moving forward.
One of my concerns is that treating everybody fairly. I mean, I'm wondering how it's gonna make these people feel that are already in this, in the plan that started when we froze this in two thousand and seven, and I was on the board and I thought you could do that. And I'm wondering how it's gonna make them feel, and then what happens to that group of people that have left the county like, uh, Kevin Tanner, Billy Carlisle? Is that one of our options?
It is.
Okay.
So not, you've got, you've got three major options.
Yeah, I've got those, one of those. I'd like to know how many people, those people have left. Like Brandy Branson, he was here many, many years.
You're right, twenty-something years.
Twenty-something years.
Twenty-six, actually.
I would not want them feeling, you know, bad out there in the community, look what they've done. And, uh, and, you know, that's one of those, Billy Carlisle, he's my family.
Here are the, and I, and I had Ryan to run. Basically, what you wind up with when you start talking about the group that is classified as vested, that they've left, the vested group, which is the number two group that Ms. Davis spoke about. Basically, for those people to get more of a benefit than what they would have got anyway, is they would have had to have been here for more than fifteen years. Because if you look at the rule of eighty, the rule of eighty, sixty-five plus fifteen gives a what? Eighty. So they would be eligible for their benefit, their maximum benefit at sixty-five regardless of whatever. Now, here is a list of the people that have that fifteen years or more vested that would be a, let's say, for example, somebody worked twenty years. So at age sixty, instead of having to wait to age sixty-five, they could get their full benefit. So here's that list of people, and I think there may be one or two more that's not on there because they don't add them as they leave, that's usually a year later, but I put one or two on there that I knew were long-termers, uh, as well. Uh, but yeah, there's about twenty-five or twenty-six of those people out of that hundred and twenty-six that could see their benefit sooner than sixty-five, based on the fact that they worked here for longer than fifteen years. People like Lene Schwalter, who worked twenty-something years. Lisa Henson, who's out here. Who worked twenty-something years. Danielle, who worked twenty-something years. Some of the other people that are associated with the county that are no longer with us, that worked twenty-one, twenty-two. Brandy Branson, as you said, who worked twenty-six years. Billy Carlisle, who worked thirty years or so for the county. Uh, because there are legate officials, other than the commissioners, are also in the defined, the ones that were here a long time are in the defined benefit plan. So you're not, you don't get counted. But they're, they're in that plan, and they would be eligible based on the rule of eighty once they fell within that rule of eighty, based on the number of years. Some of them, as you'll see on that list, are already there. Some of them still like, you know, a few years, getting to there. If they've got twenty years in, of course, they'd need to be sixty years old to draw their benefit, but that's still better than drawing at sixty-five, to get a little bit earlier. Or if they've got twenty-three years in, they would need to be fifty-seven years old to draw their benefit. So age plus years of service, uh, to get to the rule of eighty. Now, a lot of places use the rule of seventy-five. I, when I set out to look at this, I looked at it from the aspect of trying to something better for our employee, but also what would be the best way for us to fund? How could we fund an improvement for our employees? So I said, well, because the first thing that Ryan brought to me was a rule of eighty with no minimum age. So in other words, I could have started here at twenty, worked till fifty, and thirty years in, fifty and thirty equals eighty. But I told him, I said, no, I think we need, in a, in a way to control the cost, let's look at a minimum age. So we settled on fifty-five, and that's the reason you see fifty-five and twenty-five for the rule of eighty. Like, you know, Hall County used to have the defined benefit plan, I guess it still do for a lot of their employees, but the rule of seventy-five. So, uh, they got there a lot quicker, but I wanted to make sure that, that, uh, we looked at our employees equally across the board in reference to that, trying to come up with something on both of these plans that basically would be even in reference to the cost to the county percentage-wise. Uh, because if you saw what Ms. Vicki said, like, we spend about two hundred and some thousand dollars a year right now on the, on the defined contribution plan. Uh, and that would be changed to about three hundred and some, which is a fifty-six thousand dollar increase, but it's still the same percentage based on salary. Uh, because everything's based off of salary. So you've got a lot more salary in the defined contribution side of the house because, versus the, like I said, the smaller number of people that you still have left that they are using as they know. Because the people that are already in the plan, if I understood Ryan, when we had this discussion, it's set up for those people's money to be in there when they leave. Because the county was paying on those people the day they leave. In other words, we no longer pay on any of those people you saw on that list. Uh, and of those hundred and, of the two hundred and thirty, other than the people we bought out, we don't pay on any of those people now. There's only forty-eight people out of two hundred and thirty who, who worked here through the eons of time getting the benefit that they worked for. And the sad part about that is, some of those people that are in that one hundred and twenty-six, minus the people that got bought out, probably don't even know they're eligible for a plan. Because one of the questions that I had for Ryan was, are we notifying these people the day they become eligible according to our purpose? No, we are not. So if you worked here for twenty years and you forgot that you were in the defined benefit plan and been gone from here for fifteen years, and you're now sixty-five years old, unless you remember that yourself, you're not getting a dime. Which, we can change that, because I told him, I said, well, I want those people notified. They have a right to know what they, that money's already there, that ain't cost them nothing. It's already in the plan.
You wouldn't have to notify me, I'd be keeping up with it.
Well, yeah.
Every day.
But I can tell you this. Yeah. Well, I can tell you this, from nineteen eighty to nineteen ninety-seven, when I was a full-time employee here, I was in the defined benefit plan. Unbeknownst to me, nobody told me that there was a defined benefit plan until after I had worked here for seventeen years. And the reason, and I asked, I, I re-quiz this, so I asked him, I said, why have I not been told this prior to that? Well, we was afraid we'd have to stop, and we didn't want everybody to know. And I thought, well, that's not a good reason, because the money's already in the plan. So, uh, there are people, I guarantee you, who have no idea that was in that nineteen eighty to nineteen ninety-seven age group with me that were here, that maybe had ten, fifteen, or twenty years with the county, they had no, got no idea that the county had a plan. Just like the seventy people we sent a letter to had no idea that they had the ability to buy out of that plan and take their money when they left because they hadn't generated ten thousand dollars worth of worth in the plan. They did not know that because, uh, so if Brad got to talk to any of those people, but I can tell you, Lisa Green got to talk to some of those people when she was here, and they were elated to know that they could get a check.
Gosh, I would say too.
And so, you know, over the years, I mean, I appreciate the counties taking care of their employees, and they had a plan, and I'm glad they've got a plan, but we've done a very, very bad job of notifying people and keeping them informed. And that's what I tell Ryan, I said, I can't understand why, that we can't send a letter to these people and say, I mean, you've got some form of an address, and say, you're eligible for twenty dollars a month. They might like some Coke, man, or something. Because I think they should have that personally, that's just my personal belief, because they are, and they should be notified of that. And so I think we're gonna remedy that to make sure that, regardless of what we do here, that where they at least are aware that there is potential revenue that's already been paid in by the county, it's not like it's gonna cost us any more for those people.
On, on this, Greg, and this is just my ignorance in the subject, but the difference between years of service and accredited service, some of these vary greatly. Some of them are almost in line, but how, what's, what drives somebody to be three years in service and accredited twenty or twelve?
They've already left and came back, and this shows their current.
Okay, okay.
Which, whether they have a totality or the other. If they left and came back.
And then you got somebody that's thirteen years, years of service and one year credited.
They changed over to the defined benefit plan. Ah. That would be the employee that said, no, I think I like the other plan better, and I'm just gonna freeze what I got. But wanting, ain't got one here, so didn't have anything anyway. That's the same, that's the person that would take their money if they had the opportunity to give them like twenty-five dollars or whatever it is I've got put in there. That's the person that would take that money. If they had the opportunity, if they can't do that long as they're still employed, according to what we were told when we sent out the letters, to let the people that had left know that they had an opportunity to buy out. Anyway, my, my goal here was to provide something that would be benefit for our employees. There's a long array of options that you have that allows you to take a look at that, both current, former, defined benefit, defined contribution plan, employees. both current, former, defined benefit, defined contribution plan employees. And as Johnny said, you know, you've got defined contribution people, when they get to a certain age, they can take their money. They're, they're, it's not kind of tied like the defined benefit plan is. You can take that and they can do with it as they see fit at a certain time, which I think is what, fifty-nine and a half? So they're, they're not tied to, um, anything beyond that. And some of them are even than that, depending on age, I guess, or depending on what they got.
And then there's no proposal to open back up?
No, that's, no proposal to open up the back of the defined benefit plan. It'd be what it is. And so if you look back through the records and looking back through some of the time, and actually the defined benefit plan over the years obviously has gone down because we've gone down in employees. We used to pay to it three hundred thousand dollars a year into that plan, and now we're down to a hundred and twenty-five. And that's the reason I told Johnny and the staff, I said, now, you don't have to buy in because you're talking about this big change, this change would be an increase in the cost. And that increase is obviously almost is a hundred thousand dollars. But if we look at it percentage to percentage, if they're willing to put in, then the, the increase to the cost to the taxpayer is very minimal, about thirteen or fourteen thousand. Any other questions before we move on? Thank all y'all for your participation and helping us with that. Uh, county manager report.
Like the chairman, commissioners, I have a just a brief report for you. The key indicator report for the month of November is in your packet there along with the contracts and agreements that have been signed. We also, uh, uh, on December the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth for the holidays, uh, we will be closed, uh, as well as January the first, or New Year Day, that's the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, and the first of January. Also, for those of you who are interested in coming tomorrow, we'll have a faculty sweater contest. Be sure to join for that. And that concludes my report.
And that's it.
Ten o'clock, I believe, ten o'clock. That's it?
Questions for the county attorney? I'm the county manager. Moving on already. County attorney report.
Um, no, sir, I don't have anything to vote for, thank you.
All right, then we don't have anything in the executive session. So we are adjourned until six o'clock and we will resume for our voting. Thank you for your attendance.